Okay, we'll call the Board of Education meeting first. You gave the 19th order. Please stand.
My allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, first on the agenda is the approval of the county clerk's certification of April 5th, 2016 municipal election results. I'm going to accept the official results of the April 5th, 2016 election and declare Terry Daniel and Richard Rudolph as elected directors to serve as three-year term on the Board of Education of the reorganized school district number R2, St. Genevieve County Reserve. Okay, I have a motion in the second order by saying aye. Aye, opposed, motion carries. Dr. Lindsey?
It's, uh, I get the pleasure of administering the oath of office to the newly-elected Board members. So, as I say the oath of office, if you will repeat after me please, yes. Aye, state your name.
Aye, Terry Daniel Rudolph.
Do solemnly swear.
Do solemnly swear.
That I will support.
Uh, that I will support.
The Constitution of the United States.
The Constitution of the United States.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
And the Constitution of the State of Missouri.
That I will faithfully and impartially.
And that I will faithfully and impartially.
Discharge the duties of school director.
Discharge the duties of school director.
In the St. Genevieve County R2 School District.
In the St. Genevieve County R2 School District.
County of St. Genevieve.
County of St. Genevieve.
State of Missouri.
State of Missouri.
To the best of my ability according to law.
To the best of my ability according to law.
Congratulations, gentlemen.
Congratulations.
Welcome back. Uh, moving on to the next item, uh, election of the board president. At this point, I would accept nominations.
I'll nominate Mark the Reese.
Are there any other nominations for, for president other than Mark the Reese? If someone needs to, uh, make a motion, that nomination ceases and we elect by acclamation.
I'll move the nomination cease and elect by acclamation.
For a second.
Second.
Second by Mr. Rudolph. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. At this point, I will, uh, turn things back to the newly-appointed board president to pick up from here.
Okay, next, we'll move on to the election of the board vice president. Do I have a nomination for that?
I would nominate John Johnson for vice president.
Second.
Well, I'm moving the nomination cease and elect by acclamation.
Don't use that.
Second. Good on that part.
On that part. Okay.
We should reverse this.
Okay, so without any other nominations. I have a motion in the second. I'll say it by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, next, we have the election of the delegate and the alternate delegate for MSBA.
I move to nominate David Boba for the MSBA delegate.
I'll move, I'll move to like David Boba by acclamation as delegate for MSBA delegate assembly.
Second.
Second.
Okay, I have a motion in the second for the delegate for MSBA, David Boba. I'll say it by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Now we need an alternate.
Oh, I have a motion to nominate Eric Bowlesler as MSBA delegate alternate. We'll move to elect Eric by acclamation as alternate delegate for MSBA delegate assembly.
Second. Okay, I have a motion and a second to elect Eric Bowlesler. I wanted to make sure I'm saying it right. Eric Bowlesler as the alternate delegate for MSBA. No, I think we got that right. I think we got it okay.
The poll's over.
I have a motion in the second. I'll say it by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
All right, move to adjourn the reorganization session of the Board of Education of the reorganized school district number R2, St. Genevieve County Reserve.
Second.
Okay, motion in the second. I'll say it by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Okay, we'll go ahead and do the approval of the agenda.
Move to approve the agenda for the April 19, 2016 regular meeting as presented.
Second. A motion in the second. I'll say it by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have the approval of the consent agenda items.
Move to approve the consent agenda items as presented.
Second.
A motion in the second. I'll say it by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. Next, we have public participation. Okay, we move on to the report of the superintendent. Dr. Lindsey?
Uh, good evening, everyone. I'll start with the, uh, with the bond issue update. If you haven't been out there, the ball fields are starting to, uh, to really kind of come into, uh, looking like ball fields, especially with Leon's Fort Janss is, uh, has been used all spring in this brand. I think it turned out really well. We've received a lot of, of positive comments about, uh, about, really about ball fields. At Leon's, the turf is installed now. If you haven't seen that.
It's nice.
I think I sent them a, uh.
An aerial.
An aerial photograph that was pretty neat to see. Uh, they're working on fencing, uh, and sod should be completed by the end of the week. So, it'll really look like a ball field at that point. So, everything should be ready. I know there's a River Dogs tournament coming up here.
Not this weekend.
Yeah, not this coming weekend, but the ball weekend. Uh, and I've been, been promised that the field will be ready to go for that. The concession building is there, but it's not, uh, it's not completed yet. It's gonna turn out really nice. I went up and made sure that they had the, uh, the stone that recognizes it as Leon's field and that sort of thing is prominently displayed, uh, in, with the new concession building. Uh, but there's still quite a bit of finished work to be done, but it should be ready for the main summer schedule. So, uh, progress is being made there. Uh, there's also several projects that, that have yet, uh, to be completed that, that will be worked on this summer and hopefully completed, and that's Bloomsdale Gym Edition, uh, of course, the library renovation, uh, the window projects on both campuses, and then several other smaller projects are all slated for work this summer. Actually, I think they're gonna start doing some of the foundation work on the Bloomsdale Gym Edition here in the next week or two. Most work of, uh, that was approved through the bond issue will be completed by the end of the summer and, and things should be ready to go when school starts in August. There'll still be a few things that we'll have to finish up, but, uh, for the most part, the work will be completed by the end of the summer. So, we're, we're excited about that and look forward to, uh, seeing those things completed and finished and available for students and, uh, yeah, nobody gets excited about windows, but I'm pretty excited about just having some, some new windows that are not the old single pane and, uh, that we can get parts for and those, those types of things. So, uh, we're, we're really happy about that. A couple reminders, uh, recognition retirement banquet is coming up on Friday, May 13th at, uh, six o'clock, uh, out at the, uh, St. Genevieve Elks. I hope that all of you can, can make it for that. Also, with the makeup days and, uh, um, as you remember, all, all the makeup days are added on the end of the calendar. Uh, so our current last day of school is May 24th, uh, 2016, and then the faculty work day slash checkout will be May 25th, uh, which is still prior to the memorial day holiday. So, that was the plan. I guess the last thing that, that I'll talk about before I kick it to the principals for the principal reports. Kindergarten registration was, was recently completed on both campuses. You have some information, uh, in your packet. Uh, there was some, uh, a little bit of mix-up because there was some information that was put in the hard copy packet and it was different from the, uh, the version that was uploaded to Moodle. So, we have that corrected, uh, in the hard copy packet. The number of students at St. Genevieve Elementary that actually showed up and registered, uh, during kindergarten registration is 78, not 89. The 89 number was, uh, a number that included, uh, some no-shows and, uh, some retentions that we know are going to inflate that number. The 78 number is the accurate number as far as St. Genevieve Elementary, uh, students that showed up for kindergarten registration, so. Uh, and then at Bloomsdale, that number was, uh, 32 for this year, so. Unless there's any questions about anything that I've said, that's, uh, all of my reports except for safety reports, if there are any, and then principal, uh, principal reports.
Safety reports, I mean. Just our normal drills.
Okay, who wants to go first?
At St. Genevieve High School, we had 11 students from the St. Gene R2 School District who were selected as top winners for the Do the Right Thing program. 10 of those students were from St. Genevieve High School. Those students were Ashley Kreider, Jennifer Burr, Nicole Upchurch, Paige Johnson, Nathan Geisner, Wade Hawn, Clark John, John, it's Jones, right?
Jones.
Clark Johns, Isaac Boyd, Joshua Schmidt, and Ty Brown. St. Genevieve High School held its annual junior senior prom this past Saturday at the Elks Lodge. Bethany Beckett was crowned the 2016 Prom Queen. Queen Bethany received her crown from retiring 2015 Prom Queen Tiffany Porter. Austin Schwent rece, was crowned the 2016 Prom King. King Austin received his crown from retiring 2015 Prom King Hunter Boucher. Prom was organized and presented by the Class of 2017, which is sponsored by Mr. Brian Kraft and Mrs. Brie Uzell, who both did a marvelous job of organizing and hosting this event. The Class of 2017 would also like to thank all teachers and parents who helped with their 2016 prom. St. Genevieve High School is excited to now announce that Nick Bowling has signed and will continue his education at Central Methodist University in Union, Missouri. Uh, Nick will be a part of the track and field team at CMF, CMU. The Ladies Auxiliary, uh, VFW Post 2210 was pleased to announce the winners of the Young American Creative Patriotic Art Awards. First place has been awarded to Stephanie Graham, second place to Caitlin Apt, and third place went to Katrina Boland. All three of these students are St. Genevieve High School students and members of Mrs. Jamie Bowman's arts program here on campus. Members from the St. Genevieve High School Chapter of Family, Career, and Community Leaders of America recently traveled to Tantara for their state competition. Alex Newman, who is Missouri's FCC LA's first vice president, along with other 13 state officers, presented the event. Vivian Vaughn was elected as the 2016-17 Missouri FCC LA first vice president. Earning a silver rating were Deandra Boland, Erica Matthews, Abby Bates, Selena Kreitler, Kelsey Schmidt, Kirsten Trump, Caitlin Bloom, Brooke Martin, Bethany Beckett, and Michaela Bader. Earning a gold rating were Gabe Harmon, Nicole Womack, Abby Stolzer, Haile Patel, Darren Brown, Haley Winston, Caitlin Apt, Sally Greasehaber, Allison Boba, Gracie Tomir, Jaden Bowman, Rachel Bowman, Addie Stegall, and Vivian Vaughn. Six, six students also competed in the Digital Star Events and advanced to the national level. Those students were Natalie Engel, Brooke Hasty, Tess Bowman, Morgan Payton, Cassie Fleege, and Alex Newman. In all, over 12 students qualified for the national competition in San Diego, California in July. So, uh, I think Dr. Ederton is quite impressed and probably going a little crazy right now. Um, the S, the FCC LA chapter earned second place for their families acting for community traffic safety entry and their Stop the Violence entry. The chapter earned first-place awards for the families' first and leadership service and action project entries. So, they had an outstanding showing. So, then we move on to Future Business Leaders of America. These members visited the third-grade classes at St. Genevieve Elementary to teach students about the advantages of using savings accounts. Uh, this was part of their statewide project called Earning Your Education. The FCC LA members described advantages and disadvantages of using piggy banks and savings accounts and developed a savings plan by drawing some, the kids developed a savings plan by drawing something that they really liked to get and then created a plan to save money to get that item over time. Congratulations to the SGHS band under the direction of Mr. John Moody for receiving a rating of one for large ensemble at the Mishia State Music Festival. Congratulations to the boys' golf team for a victory over St. Pius and Windsor in their home season opener and for their second place at the SGHS Invitational. Congratulations to Jacob Tomir for placing fifth overall. Congratulations to Amber Mattlin for receiving first place in electronics technical information in the State Skills USA Competition at State Technical College in Lynn, Missouri. And congratulations to Ryan Milton, who will be awarded a $750 scholarship from the CMO Superintendent's at the CMO banquet on April 26th. Um, today, St. Genevieve High School participated in the statewide ACT testing. Uh, Mr. Haney would like to give a huge thank you to Mrs. Howe, Mr. Toomes, and Mrs. Rowland for their efforts. Today went amazingly well and it is due in large part to these three people. Also deserving appreciation and thank you are the students and staff of St. Genevieve High School and the students and staff of St. Genevieve Middle School, especially Mr. Taylor and Mrs. Giesler, who accommodated the request of the day. It's just kinda chaotic because they test until, I think it's about one o'clock. So, the middle school and the high school really work well together. I, kudos to both of them for making that happen. Two events Mr. Haney asked me to tell you about. The St. Genevieve High School 26th Annual Dan Clark Honors Banquet, presented by Mississippi Lime, will be held on Wednesday, April 27th at 6:00 PM. And the 102nd commencement ceremony for St. Genevieve High School will be held on Saturday, May 21st at 8:00 PM in the Peggy J. Johnson Gymnasium. Doors will open at approximately 6:45. So, a lot of great things going on at the high school and a lot more. Mr. Taylor?
Good evening, everyone. Our publications department have finished our yearbook and submitted it, so they were looking for something to do, so. We're still hanging on the coattails of the elementary and their Leader in Me stuff, and so we're, we're having the pre-brochures, which they got me a, a first copy of, on the Seven Habits, and they're putting their own spin on it, so we're in the process of going through that. But I, once again, want to thank the elementary schools for starting that and, uh, our kids have really grasped onto it and are running with it, so. Friday, March 18th, I believe Ms. Amy Meyer went to St. Genevieve Elementary and Bloomsdale Elementary and started enrolling our incoming sixth graders for next year, so that was exciting. Uh, that same evening, Mrs. Rowland and our NJHS members hosted a movie night. Um, our gym happened to be closed for, uh, construction purposes, so we had to move down to the high school and Mr. Haney accommodated us and allowed us to set up our screen and show our movie down there. So, about 100 kids attended that. Tuesday, March 22nd, we held our, um, WING celebration. WING stands for We're Into Noticing Good Students and students who don't have any late work, uh, don't get any write-ups, aren't tardy to class, don't cause a problem, qualify to spend an hour celebrating in the gym with a couple of teachers. So, there was a bunch of students. Fourth hour, we designate seventh grade, sixth hour, sixth grade, and seventh hour was eighth grade. So, they got an hour to celebrate. If, oftentimes, we spend a lot of time telling students what they shouldn't do and redirecting them, and this is celebrating what students do right. Uh, map testing has started. We, we did teacher training, um, the week of March 28th, and we began and it will continue until the end of April. We did have to pause a second today. We modified our weekly schedule so that the high school could get in their ACT testing. Uh, it was very, very weird eating lunch at 11 o'clock. I haven't done that since I was a high school teacher and now having to go back to it, I was still full from breakfast, so it was rather odd, but we got through it. Uh, Monday, March 22nd, uh, track, March 21st, track meets began and they continue, um, until the first week of May. Uh, starting April off, NJHS traveled to, uh, the CHADS Coalition. CHADS stands for Communities Healing Adolescent Depression and Suicide, to volunteer their time and to help the CHADS organization do some, uh, I think, hacking, packing some things. Uh, NJHS also does the color run every year and they take that money and they donate it to the CHADS Coalition. CHADS Coalition, uh, was cleaning out some closets and noticed they had about, I don't know, 50 flashlights and they were gonna throw them out, so they donated them back to us. So, it's trading donations, I guess. The kids go up there and, uh, listen to the lady who started the CHADS Coalition, um, who lost a child to suicide, so it's very beneficial for them because they see firsthand how that impacts families. Uh, we had a middle school play on April 1st at 6:30 at the PAC. Mr. and Mrs. Otto and our drama design classes successfully performed Unwrapped. Uh, Friday and Saturday, April 8th and 9th, uh, our dest, our independent study students traveled to Missouri Southern State University for the Destination Imagination Competition. Congratulations to Kayden Buat, Kylie Clanton, Tristan Orini, and Desiree Powell for their second-place finish in their central challenge and their first-place finish in their instant challenge. These kiddos get to travel to Knoxville, Tennessee in May, May 25th through 28th for global finals. And we're currently trying to raise funds to get those kiddos there. I don't think Mrs., uh, Mrs. Cook expected having, uh, having the first time competing kids qualify for global finals, so it's really exciting. And those, those kids are over the moon excited. Uh, Saturday, April 16th, our jazz band traveled to the North County Jazz Festival where they earned a rating of one, superior, under the direction, under, well, Lindsey's out for maternity leave, so they're under her direction, but Mrs. Hook kindly came in to take her maternity leave and she really knows what she's doing, so. She's adding her expertise to it too, and those kids came back with a one rate, which was fantastic. Those kids were really excited about that. We continue to have students considering transferring to St. Genevieve Middle School. Uh, they come in and shadow. We had six, um, last month and this month. They come in and shadow kiddos that they know here and get a feel for what SGMS is like and, uh, what their transition would be like. It's always a shock because they're coming from very, very small classes and very, very small schools to 450 kids trying to get through the hallway at once. They're scared at times, but we walk them through them. Uh, we had open enrollment insurance meetings, leadership steering committee meetings, positive climate committee meetings, and eighth grade celebration planning meetings. Um, our, our feature teacher, feature staff teacher for April was Ms. Kelly Jokers. Kelly does so much for this building. She runs the Positive Climate Committee, which is so appropriate because she is so positive. She's a great resource for all things and questions regarding special education, whether I am talking to Kelly about modification, accommodations, or concerns for students on her caseload, Kelly is very knowledgeable and provides great information and insight. Kelly pushes students to work their, work to their potential and has success getting results from students. She advocates for some students so much that she almost adopts them as her own. Kelly has a big heart and embodies the spirit of SGMS. She truly does whatever it takes for our kids, and so that's the middle school.
Hi, good evening, everyone. So, we have busy month at the elementary as well, and like Dr. Gigg on the classes, so I can see tonight. Uh, we have continued with our student letting morning announcements and it's exciting. We wrapped up with kindergarten and preschool, so they did, they were just precious as you might imagine. And so, we've made it back to fifth grade now, so we're really proud that every student has in some way been on the morning announcements this year. So, that's really a great feeling to us. And, um, we've added some things. We have created a positive office referral, kind of modeled off the middle school one. So, Mr. Cook, first he had like a really mean scary dragon. And Mrs. Gegg, I were like, no, scary dragons! And so, he fixed it up and it has the seven habits on it and the, uh, teachers fill it out, anyone on a child they acknowledge or see being a leader in some way. So, we've had about a dozen of those and they love it because we put it in the lobby, we post it, and we call it to the office and they often think they're getting in trouble. And then when Mrs. Gegg, I talk to them and they find out that they've got one of these, they're tickled, and we read it on announcements and we send their letter, parents a letter. So, it's been very positive and everyone's really enjoying it, so thanks to the middle school for the great idea. Uh, also, we've had, our March Student of the Month had their luncheon on March 31st and the habit that these kids were caught being excellent at was habit seven, sharpen and saw, which is taking care of your mind and your body and your heart and your soul. It's the habit that glues everything together because if you're not healthy, you don't take care of yourself, you can't take care of others. So, they picked kids, the teachers picked kids who seemed to be especially well-rounded kids, who can seem to do it all. But anyway, so that was on March 31st and as always, Diane Miller decorated for us and it was a great time. Um, our feature teacher for March was Steph Herzog. She had several nominations by her colleagues for being a great team player, often taking tasks on that helped the entire grade level and being a leader in our building by finding ways to help the grade levels collaborate and work together. And our superstaff was Kim Staff, or Kim Grass. She was recognized by her colleagues for being kind and compassionate with all of her students that visit the nurse clinic every day. She sees tons of kids. She rarely has less than two or three in there and she treats every single one like they're the only one that matters at that moment. And so, for her kindness and compassion, she was nominated for, by our staff for being the superstaff. Um, with activities, we, in March, we had a parent, Parents as Teachers hosted a group connection for kindergarten readiness, and it was one of the first events of that kind where the Bloomsdale kindergarten teachers and our kindergarten teachers and Head Start and parents and teachers all came together for our kindergarten readiness program. And it was timed nicely before the screening and it had a nice turnout. So, that was on March 15th. The middle school has been collaborating with us, like Paul said, with, um, instrument tryouts, enrollment, all kinds of things, and they're big, uh, mixers coming up where they get to meet each other and begin their journey as sixth graders. Uh, our green team is like on fire. They are recycling everything. Boy, if it sits, they might take it out to the trucks, so. They have, they took them about 30 minutes the first time they were doing it and now they can get all the recycling picked up and out in less than like 12 minutes. So, they're doing great and they're also working with Mrs. Cook's Dragon Kids on the shoe thing and some other things, so they're doing a lot of collaborative work. Uh, we had two big events by the PTA. On March 18th, we had the Me and My Guy Dance, which had 95 guys and lots of kids, so you know, double that. We had over 200 people in our, in our gym. And the Me and My Gal Dodgeball Tournament, and it had over 75 gals and their kids. So, those are both big, big collaborative events that the kids and parents love. Uh, we had, we, our fundraiser was a huge success. We made over almost $5,000, so lots of kids qualified for the limo ride, so we had a day of limo riding and pizza eating, um, in, on March 21st, and that money is used to pay for assemblies and field trips. So, we want to thank all the parents and community members who bought the Dragon Card and supported our fundraiser and the local restaurants because that's a lot of Dragon Cards. So, that was awesome. Uh, we have a lot, an active dentistry program in our school. Dr. Lloyd has come to put on dental varnish for all grade levels and he was, him visited preschool and gave them an early hygiene, uh, day. Also, Big Smiles visited on March 21st, so we see lots and lots of kids for dental care. Uh, fourth grade went to the art museum on March 22nd and that was great. Uh, we also had our third quarter awards assemblies on March 22nd and 23rd, and that's when we recognize A and B honor roll, good and super citizenship, penmanship, and perfect attendance. Our, our attendance continues to just like go crazy. It's just great. We've got over 96% as a building and third grade has over 97% as a grade level, so that's really awesome. Mrs. Gegg is doing a great job keeping up with attendance and working with the kids and the parents and, yeah, they're having a party later this month to celebrate. So, on Leader in, Leader in Me topics, um, Mrs. Gegg and Mr. Roth both visited Valley R6 for a leadership day, and we've got some teachers going to leadership days later this month as well. Um, on April 7th, our leadership team met and worked up the details of map testing and how to synergize and do positive things. On April 7th, our leadership team met and worked up the details of map testing and how to synergize and do positive things. They buddy grade levels. For example, I think it was a second grade buddy with fifth and first grade with third and second grade with fourth. And they do positive things for each other and kind of inspire each other and keep each other going. And on April 14th, Lance Wheeler from Franklin Covey came to our faculty meeting. And Dr. Fleege and Mr. McDaniel and our PTA president Jamie App were able to make it. And he, he just gave an inspirational presentation about the leader and the journey and what it looks like for kids and teachers. So we had our big screening, which Dr. Lindsay told you about, so we'll go for that. But lots of kindergartners coming next year. And the screening went great despite some tech issues. We, we got through it pretty well. Yeah. So it was a good day. We're map testing as well. We'll be done by May 6th, we hope, but we're, we're in the thick of it. And it's going well so well so far with minimal tech problems. And so we'd like to thank Mrs. Tunes for that. Things are ticking along nicely. And our parents have been super supportive, sending in snacks and letters of encouragement and avoiding morning appointments and really on board with the process. So thanks, parents out there. Two awesome spring concerts by Mrs. Bowman. The second graders performed Hats on April 15th and the first graders performed Go Fish on April 12th. The kids were amazing. The costumes were awesome. The parents did almost all the costume work in collaboration with Mrs. Bowman. So again, thanks, parents, for all the great fish outfits you sent in and hat donations. They were really great programs. The Southeast Missouri History Explorer visited us in the Pouring Down Rain on April 11th. And we trudged in and out all day long, but it was awesome. The third and fourth graders got to have 30-minute sessions for Missouri history in the 19th century. And they always love it. It kind of reminds me of the bookmobile when we were kids. And they just love it and they can't wait for it to come every year. And he's expanding it and next year he's coming for two days and all five grade levels get to go. So that'll be neat. Mrs. Rich Dunsey collaborates nicely with the first graders every time this year. She did her big ag presentations like Farm to Table centers with her high schoolers Monday. And now they'll follow up with a trip to the fairgrounds to see the actual animals and have them in there. So we also have teacher meetings going on, a lot of collaborative work every 80 minutes. They're still working on their assessments and curriculum, working hard on that. We love to eat. We've had two Fun Pop Lux. They're always steamy and very good. And we share a lot of great times together. And Mrs. Rich is working with teachers to update their webpages and get more Google-y. So our webpages were pretty out of date and she's working hard to get everybody up and running on a new page. And our last official RTI and CARE team meeting happened where we formed our last set of RTI rotations before we wrap up at the end of the year. So it's been, it's been pretty busy at the elementary.
Thank you.
I always feel like I should just say they don't.
My partner was crying.
But it's good because we really work hard to keep our buildings in the same place. So it's nice to be. So on March 16th, our fourth graders went to St. Louis Art Museum and Cici's Pizza. And the teachers came back and they said they received many compliments on how well behaved our students were and how mature they were. So I thought that was awesome. Fifth graders enrolled for middle school. Ms. Meyer came out and told them on the 18th. We had a reading reward day. We rented a bounce house and we had extra recess in snow cones. We had classroom Easter parties. Those went very smoothly. We have tons of parents that show up for that. So thank you, parents, for planning those. We had a kiss the pig contest for fourth grade because that is the grade level they teach Missouri history. And we haven't got to come to town for a few years. So they did a contest to help raise money for the buses and to pay for the fees for the houses. And we received lots of money. We had three gracious volunteers. It was Ms. Gilford, Mr. Kangry, and Mr. Kryler. And I volunteered kicking and screaming. But the students got to put money in a jar and vote for which person they wanted to kiss the pig at the end of the week. So it ended up, we had four baby pigs and we all kissed a pig. Then we had spring pictures. We have all the same things. We do the Hall of Fame Silver Spoon. We do the Positive Office Referrals for Leader and Me candidates. We celebrate birthdays. We have students come to the office to sign the wall for 100, 200, 300 books. April 1st, we had another pat day for the playground equipment where we raised over a hundred dollars. So I can't wait to see what we can do to the playground with the money that we raised this year. April 4th, we began map testing with IEP students and fifth grade. We had a few computer glitches with the older acers, but the chromebooks worked awesome. So we were happy we had those. April 4th and 5th, we had an awards assembly. We did a running of the halls literally. As I called the students, they stood up and they got to run around the hallway and had high fives. Everybody's sitting in the hallway and they loved that because they're not allowed to run in the hallway. April 7th and 8th, we had the RTI meetings. We got our last round of RTI going. April 8th, we had Dr. Loida's team coming in, applied dental varnish for several students. April 9th, we had kindergarten registration. It went extremely smooth. Everyone synergized. I mean, from PAT to St. Jen teachers to Dr. Green plan. And I mean, it went so smoothly. We didn't have any glitches. It was awesome. April 13th, we had Big Smiles Dental Program here. And again, we had other compliments on our students. We had a lady come back in after they packed up and she came back in. She said, I just wanted to let you know that your kids were so polite and well mannered. She said, I've been doing this for nine years and this is the most, the best I've seen these kids act. So I was like, that's so awesome. So I announced to the next one on me to come and told the kids how proud I was of them. And then again, April 15th, we had Lance Wheeler from Leader and Me come and talk to our teachers. And our teachers are really excited about it. They can't wait to begin this journey, which we've already began. But officially, we're going to begin it next year. So we're excited about that. And then I have an event coming up that I wanted to remind everybody about. We have the Spring Carnival this weekend from 10 to 2 at Bloomsdale. We have lots of new games. Boy Scouts made games for us and some of the parents made new games. So it's going to be exciting. So come join us. Come join us. Thank you.
Thank you.
This is amazing. We love, you guys know how much we love you. Was there anything I could do, please?
That's it.
Okay. All right. We'll move on to unfinished business. Instructional program presentation.
After looking at asking around, I wasn't sure what I was supposed to do really when I was here. And science said that they had you guys do a project, so I thought I would run you for our fitness test. But I know this is Blues game, so I won't do that.
Thank you.
You know, we, we have, as we go through, we really do a lot of these things, you know, every, every week, all the time. So when I talk about them, they're not really just, we do sports for a while and we do fitness for a while, we do health. It's really just mixed in. Health is about the only thing that we might not do every week. We usually try to wait till it's cold outside, you know, or bad weather and we do that. And we usually do that once a week. But, but we've kind of broken down, if we talk, we've talked about sports and activities. We, we break those down into four weeks and we kind of have units. And so I think that was a little bit different before. So, you know, we only do like flag football and ultimate frisbee. We'll do that for four weeks long. And then, you know, they'll take a pre-test, which I don't think the kids were used to. And allows us over the rules. And then, you know, for four weeks, we, we go through skills and play the game. And then we then take a post-test after the four weeks. So we do that throughout the entire, entire year. So we had football and ultimate frisbee and then the first four weeks and then volleyball and badminton. We do basketball and dance the second quarter. The boys don't, we don't do a whole lot of dancing, but the girls do. I know Coach Walk, they had to create their own line dance. You know, the boys, I know a couple of times, you know, we, we just kind of went in and they got to run around and jump and dance a little bit. But we don't, it's just, they don't care to do it. But we do use music to have them exercise. So we do get that in a way. Third quarter, we do hockey and soccer together. And then we also do bowling and shuffleboard and washers. Again, when it's cold outside, you know, we kind of have that. And then the fourth quarter, we do softball and baseball and then we do track and field. So we run through a lot of the, like the track and field today. We were, we had to split up the kids into four by four and they ran a 100-meter dash race. And, and we just, we, we thought our goal is to teach them about all these different sports. Especially, you know, the sixth graders who aren't in a sport yet. I know a lot of them, you know, start much younger, but we want them to be able to, to be able to have an idea how to play these things. So even if they're at home and they got friends over, you know, they, they have a background knowledge of every sport probably possible or activity they could do outside of school too. We also mix in stretching and strength and agility's coordination training. It's, it's again, almost like an every other day thing. You know, we have a workout day and then we have a sports day. And we do things from stations, just like running, you know, I don't know. Just any kind of athletic stuff that work on their agility and things like that. It was nice that Mr. Taylor let us use the stage now. It was not really used for much, just a lot of storage and things. And we were able to make it's painted dots and ladders and, and we're able to get some equipment and stuff. So I hope that continues, you know, it takes money to get all that type of stuff. But I think each year we can buy more and more bands and weights and, and just little things like that for the kids to get used to. And the same idea to teach them, you know, how, how to do these exercises and these things as they get older, so they can do it outside. Or, you know, especially the weightlifting. I know the boys, especially the eighth graders, want to start lifting weights. And hopefully I can, you know, show them ways that they can do that the correct way. So we, again, we mix those in about every other day. And then, you know, the, we do some fun games Friday, still dodgeball. You know, so we figure with two days of working out, two days of sports, we try to just, you know, have a little easier day on Friday. And that's one thing they always love to do. And, you know, the nurses don't, I don't think care for it so much. But the kids do like it and it's really, you know, a thing is if they don't do their work and they don't work hard, they don't play on Friday. And they have to just kind of walk in and the kids don't like that. So it's really helped with that too. And so that's kind of how our, our day's going. And we do, again, for four weeks, different sports and, and different training and things like that. And then our assessments, I talked about the pre-test and the post-test. Before each unit, we do that. We, we do one at the end of each semester that covers every sport. We had, we did that with our slow. That was our slow for this year. You know, just again, to see how much the kids are learning each time. And then finally, we have our physical fitness testing, which I did bring a handout. So if anybody would like to see it. And the only reason I did that is because most of, probably went through the presidential fitness and that's changed. It's called the Fitness Gram Testing. And I mean, it's not a huge difference. There's still some of the same components. We do some kind of running like the mile. They, they have choices. I know the high school, I think, tried to pace your test, but we still do the mile. We still have sit-ups and instead of the pull-ups, we do push-ups. And then we do the sit and reach still. And then they have a trunk lift, which is works the core and they just have to raise their chin up. And then they, we have to do the BMI testing, fat percentage. So I think that, that's a big difference with the testing than the presidential fitness. And the BMI, you know, and the checks are fat percentage. They just have to hold a machine. I was going to have you guys do it today, but I don't know if anybody wants to say so. But it allows you to see, I mean, the kids think it's neat. It's like a remote control thing that they get to squeeze. And, and it does. It kind of, it's, it's a good thing to show about where they're at. I don't technically think it's perfect and they do talk about that in the testing. For instance, if you're more of a muscular person, then it's going to put you way up. I know it tells me I'm overweight, which I don't think, I think Mr. Taylor did it and he's obese. So, you know, if you, you know, if you have the muscular part, it throws it off a little bit. But it does kind of, you know, some kids are shocked and that to see when their fat percentage might be a little bit higher. So I, I think that is a, a good thing that's added with this Fitness Gram Testing. And then finally, with health, we, we really pushed nutrition and eating right this year, something we didn't do last year. And the last three weeks, the kids had to chart everything they ate, how much exercise they did. And I, you know, all they had to do is put numbers into a chart and turn it in. So I'm sure a lot of them just randomly did that. But I had, as being out in the public, I probably had five or six parents come to me and say their kid has been on them about what they're eating. And they, I mean, they've almost stressed about it, which, you know, I don't want them to stress, but it doesn't mean that they are actually paying attention and trying. So I, I think that was a good thing. We added in health this year. Any questions?
You guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Like a comment, I don't think, I don't think they said it in the reports or anything, but Coach Call was the dream team. Coach Beard always makes comments.
And very deserving. Very deserving. Okay. We move on to summer school.
You have a handout in your board packet that has all of this information, so I'll just go through and summarize it for you. We are recommending at St. Judeve High School that we have summer school courses for English 1, 2, 3, 4, and Algebra 1. This will allow students who have fallen behind in graduating credits to make up those credits and try to get back on track. We will also be offering credit recovery opportunities as needed. These are primarily for seniors who at the last minute may fall behind and just lack one credit or half a credit to graduate. So we'll work with those students as we see them come up and try to help them get to graduation. On the handout that you have in your board packet, for the two semesters, I am proposing that summer school, first semester begin May 30th and run through June 17th. That will be our normal three weeks. I am however suggesting that on May 30th, that we have no school because it is the Memorial Day holiday. I have accounted for those four hours that we will miss there by adjusting the timeframes of the other days. The first two days, May 31st and June 1st, we would go from 8 to 12:30. And then from June 2nd through June 17th, we would go from 8 to 12:15. This gives us the 300, 3,600 minutes, which is equal to the 60 hours that Desi requires us to full December school in order for a student to earn a half a unit of credit for that semester. So that's my proposal for first semester. Second semester, and there's a typo here, sorry about that, will be June 20th through July 7th. June 20th through June 21st, we will go from 8 to 12:30 PM. June 22nd through July 1st, 8 AM to 12:15. On July 4th, I would like to have no school because it is the 4th of July, 4th of July holiday. And then June 5th through, no, July 5th through July 8th, go from 8 to 12:15 again. Again, this meets our 3,600 minutes, which is our 60 hours that is required by Desi. We will also offer at Bloomsdale and St. Jen Elementary supplemental reading programs for any student in grade fours who is reading below a third grade level. This is a state requirement, a state mandated requirement. If we have to do this, it will last for four weeks, running from June 6th through July 1st. And will take place two hours per day to comply with the 40-hour instructional time requirement set by the state. So these are the recommendations that I have for our summer school this year.
The last day of the second semester of the summer school.
It's the 8th. It's Friday, July 8th. And that was the typo, oh, no, it should have been the 8th. I got it. Right.
I move to approve the summer school 2016 as presented.
Second.
I have motion on second. I propose motion checks. Next is business, the addition of a kindergarten section for 2016-17 at St. Judeve Elementary.
Yes, you may have noticed with the kindergarten registration numbers, that the, the number at St. Jen Elementary that we had for this year's registration was, as I mentioned earlier, 78. That's the largest number of registered incoming kindergarten students that we've had in the last five years. And does not include a couple of students that we know had scheduled times and would not have been able to make it. And then also some possible retentions for kindergarten. If you look back historically, the average difference between the number that's registered and the number that actually shows up on, on the first day of school is 16, looking back at the last four years. So I feel pretty comfortable that, that we're going to need to add another section. So I feel pretty comfortable that, that we're going to need to add another section of kindergarten at St. John Elementary in order to keep class sizes down to a reasonable level. So I, I know a few years ago, we waited and added a kindergarten section after school began. That's not an ideal situation at, at the kindergarten level in particular, because those students had already acclimated to the teacher and, and to a routine. And then it was very disruptive to, to pull four or five students out of each, each classroom and send them to a new place with a new teacher. It wasn't a good situation for, for the kids, for the parents or for the teachers. So I would recommend that you go ahead and approve the addition of a kindergarten section at St. John, St. John Development for next year.
I move to approve the addition of another section for kindergarten at St. Judee Development for two thousand sixteen seventeen school year.
Second.
And the motion is second. I'll put it right.
Aye.
Motion carries. Next, the addition of the new. Next is the addition of a fifth grade section for twenty sixteen seventeen at the Bloomsdale.
Yes, we've, we've had a small class that's been going through Bloomsdale Elementary that is now leaving fifth grade and going to sixth grade. So the fourth grade class that's moving up is larger in size. So I would recommend we add another section of fifth grade. We currently have two, to increase that to involve three sections. That means they'll have four next year.
I move to approve the addition of another section of fifth grade at Bloomsdale Elementary for two thousand sixteen seventeen school year.
Second.
The motion in the second. I'll put it right.
Aye.
Motion carries. Mr. McDaniel, before we go into second, or second place of the starting ceremony, where it came from, but anyway, before we go into the closed session. I just want to say, Dr. Green has finally, has got a program. And on April thirtieth, the Jelly Gates, our new program, is going to be at the pack. So if anybody, if everybody can make it, we'd be glad to have it. If there's anything else you want to say about it? Do you think it's exciting? Starts at six.
Where, Mr. Heaney had the idea to try to make it, like, include all of the N triple A conference schools. So hopefully next year, we'll be able to invite other schools in, which I actually have a school that's interested from Clayton.
Really?
So we'll talk. Yeah, we're hoping that it will grow and that more people will be aware of the program.
Six P M, April thirtieth. It's free.
You guys, thank you so much. That's such an exciting, exciting part of ours. I mean, we hear all about our athletes, everybody, I mean, all of our good students. And I just think it's so important. Thank you so much. Okay. Mr. McDaniel?
I move that the Board of Education, on a closed meeting with a closed record and a closed vote, following the regular open meeting of May seventeenth, two thousand sixteen, to be held at the R W Thomas Library, seven fifteen Washington Street, St. Judee, Missouri, for the purpose of discussing and voting upon the following items to be announced. Legal action, cause of action or litigation, lease, purchase or sale of real estate, hiring, firing, disbanding or recruiting particular employees, proceedings involving the mental or physical health of an identifiable individual, colastic probation, exposure to graduation of identifiable individuals, testing and examination materials, welfare cases of identifiable individuals, preparation for negotiation with employee groups, software code for electronic data, data processing and documentation thereof, specification for content of bidding until approved or published, sealed bids and related documents until the bids are opened, sealed proposals and related documents until all proposed or rejected, or any documents related to a negotiated contract until the contract is executed, individually identifiable personnel records, performing trainings or records pertaining to employees or applicants for employment, records protected from disclosure by law, scientific technological innovations to which the owner has a proprietary interest, records relating to municipal hotlines established for the recording of abuse and wrongdoing, confidential privileged communication with an auditor, operational guidelines, policies and specific response plans for preventing or responding to a critical incident, existing or proposed security system with structural plans against its property, the portion of record that identifies security system or access codes, records that identify or would allow unauthorized access to or unlawful disruption or configuration components or the operation of a computer, computer system, computer network or telecommunications network, credit card numbers, personal identification numbers, digital certificates, physical and virtual keys, access codes or authorization codes that are used to protect electronic transactions. I further move to notice this meeting and its intended agenda, proposals required by law.
Third. Motion second. Roll call. Eric Foster?
Yes.
Dave Ova?
Yes.
Alan Crowder's answer. John Dunson?
Yes.
Karen McDaniel, yes. Martin Reeser?
Yes.
Rick Brulow?
Yes.
Motion carried. Six oh.
I move to go to the closed session, a closed record and a closed vote. I'll do short first.
The motion on the second. I'll put it right.
Aye.
The motion carries.